We will open the meeting. Are we ready to go?
Sure.
Okay, good. All right. Hello, my name is Elizabeth Silver. Hi to our new folks. I will be chairing the meeting of the Northampton Zoning Board of Appeals tonight. Our usual chair is not here and our second chair is not here, so it falls to me. So the first thing today that we need to do is open the meeting for public comment. Nathan, do we have anybody in the room that wants to make any comments apart from the agenda item that we have for tonight? It doesn't look like there's anyone.
There is no one, but we did have an email comment earlier from Philip Thurston, our neighbor. Would you like me to summarize it or read it?
No, not now. That relates to the actual issue before us tonight. And what we're doing right now just is the public comment section of the meeting, which is required by law. So now, without any public comment, we'll move right into the meeting. So into the issue. So we're hearing tonight a special permit request by Lynn Posner Rice, who's with us. Lynn?
Hello.
Welcome. And this is to connect a garage to a dwelling, increasing the nonconforming setbacks at 48 Ridgewood Terrace, MAP ID 24A-030.
Seventy.
Pardon me? Seventy-eight, yes. Yeah, I did say that, maybe it got chopped off, but yes. And my name is Elizabeth Silver. We have with us tonight from the zoning board, Bob Riddle, who's here by phone. Want to say hi, Bob?
Hello.
And Maureen Scanlon. So the three of us will be hearing the appeal tonight. This is a request for a super, a special permit. So this requires a concurrence of all three members of the zoning board in order to affirm the request. And as I understand it, the standard that we're going to be using tonight is that the board must find that the further reduction in the side yard setback is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming aspect of the house. So Nathan or Carolyn jump in anytime that I need correcting. So this matter has been published on March 9th and March 16th. So who will be speaking for the appellant?
I can do that.
Why don't you go ahead and proceed and let us know? Keep in mind, we do have the materials that you submitted and I'm sure that we've all reviewed them. So please give us the summary of what you're looking to do and the need for the request for the special permit.
So the, the house is on a corner lot. Ridgewood Terrace and Blackberry Lane, both of which would require the 20-foot setback in this zoning district. And the house on Blackberry Lane sits about 18 feet from the street or from its property line. And so that's already nonconforming. And we have a garage, detached garage, that is only a foot from the back line, but properly located from Blackberry Lane. And we, there's 10 feet between the house and this garage. And the owners almost always approach the house by car. And there's no entrance to the house on that side. They have to go all the way around back to Ridgewood Terrace to get in, up a flight of stairs. So we are proposing an entrance. And to get it, to make it useful as a kind of breezeway, we've attached it to the garage. We're not entering the garage from this addition, but we need that space to, to get in and have the circulation. And it's set back from Blackberry Lane. It is more than 20 feet from Blackberry Lane itself, but the existing house, as I mentioned, is only 18 feet. And also it's very low pitched. And I think in that photographic overview that we presented, you can really see how minimally visible it is from the street. And I think the email you got was from the neighbor who was directly across, who says that it is no worse for him than, than it was. And there's a bunch of garages actually across the street from this area. So basically, that's our petition.
So in connecting up the garage to the house through the breezeway, how will that change the setbacks?
Well, it changes it because now the house is attached to the garage. So that there's a, I guess there's a bigger house with the nonconforming use. And also now the garage, which is only one foot from the back property, is even less conforming than it was. We would need, I think we would need at least 10 feet from the back of the garage to the property line. But our addition is 20 feet. If, if the garage weren't there, what we are adding is 20 feet from the back property line. But anyway, the whole, it makes the conformance worse because the garage, the whole house now is less conforming because it's attached to the garage also.
So it brings the whole structure to one feet of the line of the property line in the rear. Okay. But the front doesn't change and the side doesn't change?
No.
Okay.
No.
And there's no, we, there's no construction going on in the garage itself. This is just the connection up, right?
Right, correct.
Okay.
There's no entrance from the house into the garage and the garage is not being changed.
Okay. Maureen? Bob, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
I would like clarification on, and it, and apologies Lynn, if I just laid out of the gate, not following this as carefully as I might have in reading all the paperwork you submitted. But what is the use now? And what is the use, perceived future use that might, might be prompting this change?
We're trying to get an entrance into the house. The house is pretty small. And we're trying to get an entrance into the house near the garage where the owners arrive at the house. And also the grade is higher there so that it becomes a more accessible entrance with fewer steps to get in from that side. So we wanted a sheltered entrance with some room to hang up your coat. That's what it is.
So this has nothing to do with future use of more occupants or different occupancy?
No, no. This is just an amenity for the owners to better the house.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
So do the owners anticipate the hope that they might down the line? And this is not something you're asking for right now. So we'll take this as, like exactly as you've requested. But is there any intention down the line that you hope this might also be used for additional occupancy? Another rental unit?
No, this, this thing is like four feet wide by 10 feet long.
Right, right. But I mean, the, what they're connecting it to, the garage.
Oh, to the garage.
Yeah.
No, and we're not entering the garage. And the garage is not suitable for any, I see what you mean. Yeah, no.
And you understand that would require additional permitting?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, okay.
I don't have any other questions.
All right. Is there any, is there anything else either you want to say or the owners would like to add?
Yes, I just wanted to say that we are actually, we actually need a safer, more accessible way to get into the house. Because, you know, we want an entrance near the, near the garage or near the driveway really. And where elderly, the other ways to get into the house are, you know, a little, they're not as good. They're, they're a little sketchy, really. We'd like to just have a safe, convenient way to get into the house. That's all it is.
Got it. So now you're pulling into the driveway and walking all the way around the house to get in? Is that?
Mm-hmm.
To, to the Black, Blackberry side or to the front?
Correct.
Which, to the?
We, to the, to the, to the Ridgewood. And the only thing, the only entrance on the side has a steep, it has a steep, there, there is a door on the side of, of the house facing Blackberry Lane. And it has a very steep staircase and a precipitous, open staircase to the basement, which our grandchild has already fallen down once. And he's young and sprightly and we're, you know, 144 years old and planning on living in this, God willing, for the rest of our lives. So it's, it's safe. It's not just an amenity. It's, it's actually, you know, a safety, a safety and a disability issue.
Got it. Okay. Is there anything else to add or questions? If not, then I would, Carolyn, oh, did you want to add something, Carolyn?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, that discussion that Maureen brought up about the use of the garage by the current owners. So of course, when you're evaluating special permits for zoning, it's about the land and the, and the house on the property for the rest of time, not just the current owners. And so your decision could be to, that it, you're allowing the connector to create an attached garage. And the reduction is from the required 10-foot rear setback to one foot. But with that, I would strongly recommend that the garage can only be used as storage and workshop space as an attached garage with the allowance to go closer to a setback than a house could go. But that's, so that that clarifies that the garage can't in the future be, you know, converted to a residential space in it by itself. You know, no matter who the owners might be down the, down the road.
Okay.
So might I ask Carolyn? Would that be something we might consider setting as a condition such that the owners, the current owners or the subsequent owners could then request the ability to, like, are we making, if, if we set that as condition, which I understand is a possibility right now, would, how would we phrase it? Should we want the current owners or future owners to have the ability to come back to us and ask to have that garage be turned into a occupant unit? Like a secondary, whatever, accessory unit?
Though permits can always be amended or a request for an amendment can always be made. So this isn't something that's, you know, codified or, you know, recorded for the end of time. It's a special permit and it goes with the land. And so if someone down in the future wanted to modify that, they could come back to the zoning board and say, we'd like an amendment to the permit to address this condition.
Okay, so it's not draconian.
They would have to come back and ask for a variance, wouldn't they? Carolyn?
Well, they've been granted, if the board grants a special permit tonight, you'd be granting a special permit for a reduction in the setback for, essentially a further reduction in the setback for an attached garage. And so that then would be an amendment to that special permit. And then whatever the rules are at the time, we determine what that permit path would be in addition to the amendment.
So the permit right now would not permit a residential occupancy?
Well, the, the, the reason for the clarification is that really the building, the city cannot, you know, once you attach structures, then we look at it as a whole and it's the entire single-family home. I mean, we have specific require, and so if someone comes in and says, I want an electrical permit, they can pull an electrical permit because it's within that envelope of a single-family home. And modifications can be made without necessarily evaluating whether or not the residential use is allowed in that space. But if you grant it as a reduction in setback for the purposes of allowing an accessory garage to be attached, but closer to the lot line than what's normally required for an attached accessory garage. When we allow reductions in setbacks for accessory garages that are attached, we say you can get closer to the lot line if and only if it's used for workshop, garage, office space, but not residential. So in this way, you'd be clearly defining this space is being approved as a, you know, attached garage that can only be used as workshop, storage, office, et cetera. And then, and, and that's, that's sort of the, the difference. If you don't do that, then you're saying the whole thing is residential and whatever happens in the future, someone can come in and expand into that space without coming back for any kind of review.
Which is, as I recall, what some of the issues were around the Maple Street property that we dealt with on the attachment and the breezeway there.
Exactly, yep.
Any other questions for Carolyn or for the appellant? All right. If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion with close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, Carolyn?
Or I guess by, I'll, I'll do it by roll.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry, Nathan.
Well, but one thing I want to raise is we did have an email, um, public comment. So, forgive me for asking this basic question, but are we, are we supposed to take the public comment first and then close this hearing? Or do we take the comment after closing the hearing?
I think we can close the hearing and then I was planning to acknowledge that there was that one comment when we were debating this within just, just ourselves. And, and for those of you attending, not on the board, once we close the public hearing, that ends the right to comment at all and make any comments. We deliberate among ourselves, so. But I would acknowledge that we did have the supportive letter by your neighbor, so, yeah.
And just to clarify as well, that the letter was submitted to that officially the record, it did go to the board. So there's not a requirement that it be read to become part of the record.
Right. I wasn't planning to read it. Just acknowledge it.
Right.
So you want to do the roll call?
Yeah, I'll take a roll call to close the hearing. Silver?
Yes.
Riddle?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.
Thank you. All unanimous?
We could either entertain a motion and then discuss, or discuss and then entertain a motion. What would be your preferences?
I just will have the motion. I'll make a motion that we, that we approve the special permit by Lynn Posner Rice to connect a garage to a dwelling, increasing nonconforming setbacks at 78 Ridgewood Terrace, MAP ID 24A-030. And as, as in the request, everything according to the request.
And do we want to add the limitations on the use of the garage in this? I, I think that probably makes some sense.
I, I do. And I thought that that was kind of understood in the request, right? But if it's not, then I want to add those restrictions.
Yeah.
I think it would be good to make it explicit. To have it on the record.
To have them on the record, as Carolyn laid it out.
So how would the motion finally?
The building, the building is to be used only as a workspace or storage area and not as a domicile.
Residential use?
Residential use, no residential use.
Will that cover the bases, Carolyn? Okay, good. Is there a second?
Before, one second. Before, for clarification or record, when you say building, member Riddle, you are referring to the garage, correct?
That's correct, the garage.
Okay, thank you.
After it's, after it's attached by the breezeway.
I feel like that's clear and I will second that.
Is there any discussion or have we had our say?
I have no discussion points.
Bob?
I have no discussion. I have no discussion.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm clear. I think we're following past precedent as we did on Maple Street and that we are clear about this. And I think it meets the standard that it's not only not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, but I think it's actually enhancing it and certainly enhancing your experience in living in the house. So I think it's a worthwhile project here. All right, so roll call vote. Nathan?
Actually, before that, do we have a second on the Riddle's motion?
I seconded.
Okay, thank you. Right, by roll call. Silver?
Yes.
Riddle?
Yes.
And Scanlon?
Yes.
All right, it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Yeah, good luck with the project. I know Ridgewood is a beautiful street.
Thank you.
Yeah. I always applaud our ability to expand our use of our spaces, our homes.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stick around or leave. We have a set of minutes that we need to review.
From past meetings.
From one past meeting, yeah.
Yep.
I'm gonna leave. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nathan?
Okay, so we have the minutes from the January 26th meeting. And I saw one, one typo. I found a typo. This is my first time ever. At the very, the second and last paragraph on the first page, it talks about two parking pots. I think it went to parking spots.
Thank you.
Yeah, anytime. Other than that, do we have a motion on the minutes?
I actually would like to have a discussion about the minutes. But I could also, yeah, I could approve or make a motion to approve these minutes. Doesn't, I don't think it affects that.
Second, okay. All right. So you wanted something to say about the minutes?
Let's, let's just approve these minutes. So we've approved the minutes? Approved and seconded?
Not yet.
We, we've had a second. We haven't approved them. But if there is an issue with the minutes, then now is the time to raise it as opposed to after they've been approved.
Um, it's a discussion point that I think could happen before or after, but I'd like to raise it now. Since we could, I've heard a couple of times recently where, like applicants, lawyers have questioned, they couldn't go back and find the minutes, they couldn't find the videos of the meetings. And I look at these minutes and I see some points that I think are oversimplified and missed some of the, what I guess I would call nuances or negotiations or conversations within the minutes that can't quite be captured. And I wonder if there might be a value in setting up a protocol where we include links to the video of the meeting in the minutes.
All right, I think that that is a conversation that's outside approval of these minutes.
I agree.
And that maybe, then it probably needs to go on the agenda if we're going to have a conversation like that.
So the point that brought it up was a simplification of a conversation in the, this set of minutes that did not, to me, adequately represent the conversation or the negotiation that I, I could not, I did not think was like necessary to go back in and look up the meeting and follow the minutes and look at what did not feel like it fully represented the dialogue in the meeting. And I, maybe it's a bigger issue and some, one thing, that something that does not belong in this conversation right now in terms of approving the minutes. But I looked at the point in the minutes where I posed something and the attorney came back and it oversimplified or even potentially missed the point of the discourse in the meeting. And if, when attorneys go back and look at our minutes and they try to figure out what happened and this is all they have to go on, and then they say they can't find our recordings, easily find our recordings of the meetings, I just feel like, like we can't put everything in the minutes. But I would like to point to the fact that we record all these meetings.
Well, there are legal requirements about what goes into the minutes and it doesn't require a transcript by, by any, you know, reading of what the law is. And, and they do have to be recorded. And if anybody would call Carolyn, she would tell them exactly where to find them if they don't already know how to find them. So I guess what I would suggest is that if you have a particular paragraph, sentences, whatever, that are missing in this, these minutes that you would like to add, that you would propose that they be added, but that I, my sense of the minutes is that they actually are very comprehensive and satisfy the legal requirements of what's included in minutes. And, and, I mean, it's just impossible to, unless you're going to do a transcript, to, you know, capture all of that. So I, I think rather than even having a conversation about what's in the minutes that get, that I, I can see sort of going off into really nonspecific kinds of, of suggestions that we concentrate on any particular piece of the minutes that you find is missing and you'd like to add as opposed to, you know, that larger conversation. That would, that would be my take because I think that these minutes are more than adequate and more than a lot of other minutes I've seen. But that, that's just my take. um, I don't know.
Could, could I add something to that if, if that would help?
Yeah.
So, um, you're an adjudicatory body and the important, so, and as Elizabeth noted, you're required to, to identify, you know, when the meeting took place, the, um, the topic, the advertising information, who, who made comments. Um, they are to be cursory because your, your discussion is not what counts. What counts is your decision. And so the most important thing that comes out of your meetings are, is the decision and the rationale for for making that decision and making sure that meeting the code requirements and the findings that you need to make in order to make that decision. And so the recording of that decision is the important piece of what comes out of the meeting. So it's not like city council or school committee that they, you know, talk back and forth a lot about subject matter and then create a policy. Um, so it is different from that in that regard. The other thing is the video recordings are not required either. Those are not legal records of the meeting. It's helpful and instructive if someone wants to go through, um, to see a meeting that they missed. They are a product of Northampton Open Media and Northampton Open Media stores that. And we always tell people that to, it's outside of our ability to tell Northampton Media when to post or whether they've edited it and can post it. And sometimes, you know, we miss sending that link on to Northampton Open Media. And so, you know, we have to make sure that once we get, it's best practice to make sure that once we get the recording, that we send it to, um, Northampton Open Media so that anybody can go to Northampton Open Media and look at those meetings if they want to. So, um, but then also obviously to Elizabeth's point, I will say that if you feel, um, as though something that you said or someone else said in the meeting isn't adequately captured in the minutes, that would be perfectly fine to suggest, you know, um, an addendum or an edit of the minute time. For sure.
Okay, so the recording of the meetings is not required?
No.
And we do this because? Because?
Transparency, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, should we, uh, take a roll call on the, uh, approval of the minutes? Nathan?
All right, I, I mean, I, I was just thinking, uh, if, uh, if Maureen is very concerned about particular nuance, I mean, I, I think this would be time to, or you can send me, you don't have to approve it. I know it's the unusual practice, but you don't have to approve it now. You can send the amendments and we can, uh, review the amended minutes again and approve it later.
That's true. We could do that.
Director Carolyn, if I'm wrong, but yeah, if you're really uncomfortable about, uh, approving as it is, we can always amend it before approving.
Maureen, what would you like to do?
I, um, I could, based on that, I could move forward with approving the minutes. And if I go back and review the recording of the meeting and see that it captured, it, it recorded something that doesn't feel um, like it captured the um, back and forth, the dialogue in the meeting, I would request to go back and amend the minutes. It's not a huge point. It's not, it's not a huge point. But there was something that was very simplified in the minutes that I thought was a, uh, more involved issue and more involved dialogue that I'd like to go back and remind myself about. And I did not do that in advance of this, so I will apologize. So we also could wait and, uh, review and, uh, approve the minutes at our next meeting. It's, it's not.
Tell you what, why don't we approve them tonight and then take a look? And then if there's something else to be, um, considered, then we can, you can ask Carolyn to put it on the agenda in time, okay?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Do we still have Bob?
I'm still here.
Thank you.
All right, roll call?
Nobody has moved to approve them, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, let's make them, you know, please make a motion.
Moved and.
Oh. Yeah, we moved.
Sorry, sorry, thank you.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
So. So Bob, Maureen seconded?
I, I will second.
Yep.
So by roll call, um, Silver?
Yes.
Scanon?
Yes.
Riddle?
Yes.
Okay. I think we're good. Um, next meetings, Carolyn?
Um, Nathan, right, I believe there is one in April, the first.
I'm so sorry, Nathan, it's just habit.
Well, it's, yeah, I'm still, yeah, there, there is, um, uh, um, April thirteenth hearing. And, I mean, details are provided, but in general, it's about a, a home business, uh, with, uh, non-resident employees. And also some, some details are kind of raised, uh, during the review, uh, about potential, um, uh, there being more activity than specified possibly and some details can be clarified. So that's, uh, that's the, that'll be the, um, the current item. That'll be the item on the next April thirteenth hearing. At five thirty.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Thank you and, um.
Thank you.
I loved your, uh, the notice to us with all the information and the standard. That was great. Thank you.
Yeah, we look forward to your support. Thank you, Nathan.
What, Bob?
Seeing your voices and it's nice seeing your voices and hearing your cases.
Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I will move.
I make a motion, we adjourn. Okay, I second.
You're a one man show tonight, Bob.
All right, roll call?
Yep, by roll call, um, Silver?
Yes.
Scanon?
Yes.
Riddle?
But, yes.
Uh, great, all right.